Today, we have a very special presentation on behalf of the council to the mayor, a birthday cake. Mayor Hahn. His sister will now disclose how old he is. Do you really want me to sing "Happy Birthday" to you, Mayor? I really don't thi... All right, all right.
We should sing.
Councilmember Zine will now lead us in the birthday song.
Let's go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much. Had a great birthday present yesterday. Getting sworn in as mayor. Looking forward to working with all of you. And thank you very much, City Council, for remembering my birthday. And appreciate it very much. I know this is such a kind of a lighthearted occasion today here in the, in the City Council. Enjoy the day. Thank you very much. So you want me to cut the cake and have some cake now? Have a little party? Nothing else going on today, is there? Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Did you want to get, did you want to get a picture of this? Yep. Almost dropped. All right. Thank you. You want to see the cake? You see it? Oh, wait a minute. He didn't want to see the cake. Turn the cake around.
No. How lovely would it be if you liked to know?
Members of the City Council. Council is now in regular session. We've got a lot of people on the sidelines. Please be quiet. Mr. Carter, please call the roll.
Bernson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, and Zine. Fourteen members present in a quorum, Mr. Clerk.
This being the first legislative day of the count, of the month, and in accordance with the custom of the council, I'm going to ask Councilmember Bernson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and remain standing.
Thank you. Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will now have the invocation by Father Charles Andrus, representing the Los Angeles Interfaith Committee and the Catholic Community of Los Angeles.
Good morning, everyone. Join with me now as I invoke God's presence upon this council. We know from scripture that Solomon asked God for wisdom so that he might govern God's people wisely. It is in this vein that we come in this chamber today to ask God's presence on this chamber. Be present to the City Council, oh God. Heavenly Father, grant that each member of this council be given wisdom, the wisdom of Solomon, to judge wisely the issues brought before them. Give them good health and strength to fulfill their duties. The day will be long, their task hard. We ask you, Lord, to grant them patience with one another and a listening heart to those who come to them with their issues. Give them a keen sense of justice, justice to all in this city of many, many races, many creeds, many tongues, many lifestyles, many livelihoods. And Lord, at the end of their day, grant them a peaceful night and a restful sleep. Keep them free from all harm. Hear us, oh God, as we come together as a people, seeking the best for all. Grant us our requests as we ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please be seated. Pursuant to Council Rule Number One, the term of office for the council president expired on June 30th, 2001. A quorum being present, the first order of business will be to elect a new president of the council. Eight votes are required. Historically, the council has elected the president by an oral roll call vote taken in alphabetical order. Unless I hear an objection, the role of the council will be called by Mr. Carter for the purpose of electing a council president.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
I think it's a historical moment here today, and it would be most appropriate to have those who are intending to be president of the council at least address the members of the council for, and the public, five minutes explaining their vision and their hopes for the next two years as the second most influential individual in the city behind the mayor of Los Angeles. I so move.
Do I hear a second? Did I hear a second? The motion has been introduced and duly seconded. We're going to take a vote on the matter. Any discussion by members of the council? Mr. Garcetti.
I would just say that on the face of it, I have no problem with that. I would just want to make sure that everybody has had as much preparation and notice for this as, as possible. Just something for us to consider.
Any other comments before we take the vote? Mr. Pacheco.
First of all, Mr. Garcetti brings up a very good point. It's unfortunate that this wasn't brought to anyone's attention prior to today's meeting and was sprung as a last-minute action on the part of one of our colleagues. But we will see that the individuals who are going to be asking to be council president will obviously give us their best thoughts, and I'm confident that things will work out well. But it's unfortunate that it came about this way.
Any other comments from members of the City Council? Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Twelve ayes, two noes. It passes. Now, I'm rather at a dilemma, ladies and gentlemen. I've heard two names who are running for council, president. There may be more. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Colleagues, I would like to nominate Councilman Padilla for president at this time.
So we're going to deviate from the standard practice. Councilman Wax.
Point of order irrespective of the procedure we're now going through, the rules are that when we go through and vote, you can vote for anyone you wish to vote for, whether they're a candidate or not.
That's correct. Mr. Bernson.
You know, I really didn't expect Nate's move, but I always give Nate a second out of courtesy. But I would suggest that anybody who, you know, who has or would accept the presidency if they were elected, we start at this end and, or at either end, I don't care where, and give everybody, anybody that wants to talk about it, two minutes. And after that, this is the first time in 22 years that I've seen this procedure, but what the heck, it's a new world, right?
All right, we're going to start alphabetically. Anyone interested in becoming the president of the City Council that would like to stand up and for a five-minute period, present their platform, please do so, starting with, Mr. Bernson has elected not to run.
I said, if nominated, I will not run. If elected, I will not serve.
Ms. Galanter.
That was Mr. Bernson's shortest speech on record. As, as I'm sure everybody knows, I would like very much to be elected as the council president. I have served as the president somewhat by accident, and for the record, I sense, a sense of suspicion here. I learned only about five minutes ago that Mr. Holden was proposing to do this. It has always puzzled me in the years that I've been on the council that we do not take any time to introduce ourselves to one another and to the public. And at a time when we have as many new members as we do, an unprecedented number, and most of you have not had a chance to get to know each other or any of us who've been here very well, seems to me a perfectly reasonable procedure. Let me say that I think, as, as we have all noted and as I just mentioned, that the most significant thing to happen in the coming two years is the departure of all of the remaining longtime council members. We've, we've lost and are losing a number of veterans at this time, a number of people have just departed. Mr. Wax will be leaving soon, who's the longest-serving council member. We are in a position where, and the rest of us who've served more than eight years will be leaving at the end of this two-year period. By losing all of those who've served only eight years, we have an enormous gap in experience and not just experience, but knowledge of the history of what's gone on around here and why some of the controversies that exist are what they are. It seems to me that the most critical task of the coming two years is to make sure that as the rest of us depart, the new generation, which will very shortly become the old guys, is as, as caught up as humanly possible, not only on the procedures, but really on the folklore, the kind of history that comes through getting to know personalities, getting to know the history of controversies. Mr. Garcetti, as the newest council member, has already been confronted with the Playa Vista project. This is a complex issue. The airport is a complex issue. The harbor is a complex issue. The CRA is a series of complex issues. And it seems to me that the most critical thing we can do in the coming two years is to help those of you who have suddenly landed here after a lot of hard work to become acclimated and become equipped to take on the mantle of leadership in two years. It is absolutely unprecedented in city history to have as big a turnover as we will have had in this just completed election and the next one. My concern as president has been, just will be the same as it has been in my year filling in for Mr. Ferraro and then since his passing as the council president. And that is to ensure that everybody's agenda, everybody on the council's agenda is heard, that the, I assist you in whatever way I can to carry out the agendas that you have. You know best what is critical and important in your own district. We have to make common purpose on the issues that transcend any single district. The issues of, the issue of reapportionment, of course, is on everybody's mind. There's nothing we can do about that. It's going to be on everybody's mind until we settle it, and it happens every 10 years. There will be many controversies that come up, many tensions that come up around committee assignments, around reapportionment. It is my view that the, who serves on which committee would not be significantly different, no matter who is the council president, because we generally try, we have historically tried, to put people on committees where they want to serve and to keep people off committees where they really don't want to serve in order, in order to further the work of the council. Most council work should be conducted in the committee process. And I have proposed to a number of you informally, and I will propose formally if I am the president, a reorganization plan that takes account of some of the changes that have occurred in the city with the advent of the new charter. We have, for example, been dealing with the issue of neighborhood councils under a committee titled government efficiency. Now, there's a lot to be said for government efficiency, but it seems to me that neighborhood councils and the kind of involvement that most of the new members campaigned for requires that a committee be set up to pay more attention, more focused on how to involve the members of the public in city government and maintain the kind of contact between the people and the government that we desperately want and that neighborhood councils are supposed to provide. I think we need to, and I know that the mayor also intends to look at consolidating and improving the way we address economic development in the city. We desperately need to do that. We have a housing crisis that has to be addressed as part of economic development and as part of school construction, interestingly enough, because if you build a school in a, in a dense neighborhood, you're going to wind up displacing people, and we have to have a place to house them. So my goal as president of the council would be to assist each of you in accomplishing the agendas that are most important to you. We do have some specialists within the council. Those of you who are new, I think, will rapidly become specialists. But I'm concerned also that as you do that, you have the opportunity to become a generalist and to acquire the maximum amount of perspective and history so that you can form your own vision and you will be able to lead the city in the future. In order to do that, I believe it is to your advantage to have the, to involve those of us who will be leaving as comprehensively as possible, because once we've left, we're out of here, and you're on your own. I want you to be on your own with the best possible background, equipment, and knowledge, and sense of the pitfalls that are involved in public service as well as the rewards. So I ask for your support. I understand that lots of deals have been made and lots more deals have been offered. That is the nature of politics. It is sort of the seemier side of politics. And so I would like to close by thanking Mr. Holden for creating this opportunity.
Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn.
I would serve if elected, however, I am not running for this position. However, if I was president of the council and I ever had to become the acting mayor, it seemed like it would be easy on everyone to just keep saying Mayor Hahn.
Duly noted. Mr. Holden.
I pass.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Miskowski. Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, colleagues, Councilman Holden for providing this opportunity. We were here last Thursday dedicating, rededicating, I should say, these chambers. And for the members who were here then, you heard me speak, for the new members who have joined us beginning today, I want to share with you how I opened my statements then. This is in a very impressive chambers. For the members who are coming back, it's nostalgic. We remember the great things that have happened in this chambers and in this building. For the new members, I think the awe of the reality of these chambers is coupled just as significantly with the excitement and the idealism that you have brought with you. It's what drove you to run for public office. It's what drove you to work hard during your campaign. And so here we are in these chambers. And Ms. Galanter, you're absolutely correct. This is a historic day and a historic opportunity for us as a council, but for the entire city of Los Angeles, with the turnover that we see on the City Council, with the election of a new mayor and the new charter and this beautiful building. I spoke on Thursday about having the courage to be bold enough to legislate and work together in a way that warrants being in these chambers. Colleagues, I have offered myself to serve as your president because I believe I will do a good job. I have offered myself to serve as your president because we have this great opportunity before us. I believe I could bring to the position of presidency the abilities to work with each and every one of you. For the members who have served for years, I believe we have a great working relationship, open communication, honesty, and integrity between us. And for the new members coming in, we're beginning to get to know each other. But I recall, because it was only two years ago, the excitement, the idealism, and the energy that you have right now. I believe if we came together, we can capture that and do some tremendous things for the city of Los Angeles. I also believe I have a unique thing to offer. With the quirk in the term limit laws and the fact that I was elected in a special election, I have the possibility of serving 10 years here. It's a great privilege. On the one end of my term, having served with legends like John Ferraro, may he rest in peace, like Hal Bernson, like Joel Wax, like many others. Should I be privileged enough to stay here those 10 years, on the tail end of my service, I will be here with a completely new council. I believe I can offer the continuity through that transition period. Yes, unfortunately, because of term limits, we're forced to have to come up to speed a lot quicker than was historically was the case. But I believe I have begun to do that, and I believe I will continue to do that. And I will rely on the new members to work just as hard to do that. And I have called upon the senior members to play their part in imparting upon us as a collective, their experience, their history. a collective, their experience, their history, their bruises and their scars. Not because that would be best for whoever is privileged to sit as your next president of the city council, but because that is what's best for the council as a body and for the city as a whole. I think the traits that we look for in a president are those of fairness, are those of honesty, and those of integrity. I'm proud to say I represent that. I also believe we look to that president for leadership and for some guidance and facilitation. We've been compared to squirreling cat, herding cats, as how this council sometimes functions, based on our relationships. Not alone, but with your help, we can do that. We can improve the respect, the legality, the nobleness of what it is to be public officials and to serve on the Los Angeles City Council. Colleagues, we have had many, many individual conversations with each and every person around the horseshoe. You know what I'm about. You know what my thoughts, my ideas, my dreams are for us as a collective, and that is how we will work should I be your next president, as a collective. I am humbled by just being a candidate for president. You would have asked me two years ago, you would have asked me two months ago, I never thought I would be here. But I'm humbled for being a candidate before you, and I would appreciate your consideration and your vote.
Ms. Perry? Mr. Reyes? Mr. Ridley Thomas? Mr. Wax? Mr. Weiss? We're going to return to the historical exercise. So I'm going to ask Mr. Carter to call the roll alphabetically, and each of you will announce who you are voting for, for president of the city council. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Burnson?
Ruth Galanter.
Ms. Galanter?
Galanter.
Mr. Garcetti?
Alejandro Padilla.
Ms. Hahn?
Alex Padilla.
Mr. Holden? Ms. Zakowski?
Alex Padilla.
Mr. Pacheco?
Alex Padilla.
Mr. Padilla?
My father's name Padilla.
Ms. Perry?
Galanter.
Mr. Reyes?
Alejandro Padilla.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Ruth Galanter.
Padilla.
Mr. Weiss?
Padilla.
Mr. Zine? Ms. Galanter?
Mr. Padilla, I'd like to congratulate you and wish you all the best.
When he gets up here, we're going to elect the president pro tem, and he will conduct
Colleagues, we've already broken tradition once. I'm going to break tradition if you'll indulge me for just 30 seconds. I really, first of all, want to thank God for all the blessings and opportunities He's brought to me in life, and I want to thank each and every one of you, whether you voted for me or not, for trusting me and having the confidence in me to serve you. I want to thank my staff, both my city hall staff and my field staff, who work hard above and beyond the call of duty on a regular basis. If they didn't do a tremendous job, I could not even consider taking upon additional responsibilities. And I told them this morning, and I've told them before, should I be privileged to serve as the president of the city council? It's not going to compromise the resources and services and the representation to my district. We will be adding to that. And so I want to take a moment to acknowledge all of them and thank them. I mentioned we broke tradition already once. I don't know if we want to repeat the format of allowing candidates for the position of president pro tem to make any comments. We'll begin with Mr. Burnson. Mr. Carter, will you proceed? Going around the horseshoe. Mr. Burnson? Excuse me a second. Ms. Hahn, would you wish to be recognized?
No.
No? Any?
If you're a candidate, you want to say something.
We'll proceed in alphabetical order like we, as we did for the presidency. Any members wishing to seek the position of president pro tem are now invited to make a brief statement.
President Padilla and members of the council, I nominate Jan Perry to be president pro tem.
Mr. Holden?
Second.
Ms. Zakowski? Mr. Pacheco? Ms. Perry?
I'll pass for now.
You only get, you only get one bite at the apple here.
All right, all right, this is the time to speak?
This is the time to speak.
Thank you very much, Janice. I appreciate that. I'm, look forward to working together with all of my council members. I'm extremely excited to be here. It was a very hard-fought battle for the ninth council district. It was a community-based campaign, and I'm here to carry out the wishes of all the people who voted for me and for those who did not. My primary issue is that of economic development, and I join with you, Mr. President, to make sure that we spread the largesse of economic development throughout the entire city. I would like to work with all of you to make sure that we have a constructive and positive and equitable reapportionment process, and to make sure that people throughout the city believe that they had a hand in the process and that they received their fair share. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Mr. Reyes? Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, congratulations. Members of the council, I stand as a member of 10 years, prepared to provide the level of leadership that has been attempted over that decade of service here on the Los Angeles City Council. I have spoken with the vast majority of you about the opportunities for leadership. I'm pleased that you have spoken affirmatively about the conversations that we have had. I think the opportunities that are before us are potentially extraordinary. I simply invite you to join in seizing those opportunities. One of the points that was made at our first re-entry to this building was that of how we conduct business given our own democratic processes. I suggested that civility ought to be at the top of the list. I still believe that. I believed it with respect to the leadership that has been provided on a range of citywide issues as well as local issues, not the least of which being that of the neighborhood empowerment movement. I dare say there is no member of the council who has made a bigger, more noteworthy investment in that effort than it has in part been from the support that many of you have accorded me. Those of you who are new members have taken note of the work that we've done in the eighth district empowerment congress with a great degree of respect and interest in learning. These are the things that can be done, and a range of things. The opportunities before us are, in my view, tremendous. And with the conversations that have briefly been entertained with the new council president, I assure you, a team of this sort could send far-reaching messages and portend possibilities that are well worth our celebrating, and I would appeal to you for your support this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Wax? Mr. Weiss? Ms. Zine? Mr. Clerk? Burnson?
Ridley Thomas.
Galanter?
Ridley Thomas.
Garcetti?
Ridley Thomas.
Hahn?
Jan Perry.
Holden? Ms. Zakowski?
Ridley Thomas.
Pacheco?
Jan Perry.
Excuse me, council president? I'll forgive you once and once only. Perry? Just kidding. I'm sorry, didn't hear that, Ms. Perry. That was Mr. Reyes. Ms. Perry, could you please repeat? Ridley Thomas?
Ridley Thomas.
Wax?
Mark Ridley Thomas.
Weiss?
Ridley Thomas.
Zine? Congratulations, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley Thomas? I know you're saying thank you to your colleagues. I invite you to say, at this moment, a few words if you want to take a couple of minutes.
Mr. President, I was attempting to make my way around to say thank you to the members of the body. Contrary to popular perception, I'm a man of few words. One-syllable words, no less. But I think what this means is both Alejandro Padilla and Mark Ridley Thomas have an opportunity to work very effectively together in the interest of this body. And given the fact that we have new leadership at the executive level as well as the legislative level, we will have great opportunities to distinguish Los Angeles in ways that have yet to be seen. So once again, I thank you, and, Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity.
So thank you, and please proceed to greet your colleagues. Council members and members of the public, we were, we are going to take about a 10-minute recess to allow the clerk to reconfigure our voting system to reflect the elections we have seen here this morning, and we will reconvene in about 10 minutes and proceed with today's agenda. Colleagues, if we can reconvene, sergeants, please clear the aisles. We have some business to attend to, colleagues, if we can come back to order. Council members, before we proceed with the balance of today's agenda, there is a special presentation, a surprise presentation. I'd like to, at this time, acknowledge Juanita Tate to please come forward to the microphone and proceed with your presentation.
I would like to thank the council president for showing his first graciousness to do something out of procedure. But this is a very, very special day in the Ninth Council District. I would like to thank your staff, also Councilman Padilla, for rising to a three-minute occasion. They are people who can take care of the business, and I really appreciate you, young lady, for jumping to the occasion to handle my problem. As Executive Director of Concerned Citizens of South Central Los Angeles, I would first like to welcome all of the new council people because you will be seeing us from time to time. But I would like to take this opportunity to say that we in the Ninth Council District are very, very proud of a grassroots campaign run by grassroots people. Our candidate had the endorsement of none of the sitting officials, not the mayor, not the city council person, not the county supervisor, not the congressman, congresswoman, and not the two Assembly people. But Councilman Nate Holden, I'll say it to you to your face, you're the best in the business, and that's all I have to say. Mark Ridley Thomas, with all your controversy, I take my hat off to you because you were there for me. I'll never forget you for it. But now we have a councilwoman who's not sitting on her hands, she'll be standing on her feet, fighting for the slogan that she and we as the community stood for, fighting for our fair share. And what's important is that all these young people behind me never knew what a council person was, they've never been to a council office, but they stood the test of time. They went through prom nights, grad nights, graduation nights, SAT scores and all that to walk the community and press the flesh for Jan Perry. Jan, the community is here for you, and we will stand beside you. Would you come, please?
We want to recognize and thank Jan Perry, City Councilwoman Jan Perry, for recognizing the diversity in the community in the Ninth District, and also for empowering African-American and Latino youth.
Hello, my name is Martha Daniel, and I'm a junior at John C. Fremont High School. And working with Ms. Councilwoman Jan Perry on her campaign has been a great opportunity for me and experience. It has brought out an interest in politics that wasn't there before. Also, the opportunity to make a difference and to better our community is a great feeling for us to know that we have done something to help ourselves and others. And as Ms. Jan Perry, Councilwoman, as our Councilwoman for the Ninth District, many changes will be made for the best interest of the community. Thank you, and we appreciate that very much.
Jan, on behalf of the youth of City Nine, we'd like to present this to you. It says, "In appreciation of Councilmember Jan Perry for your commitment to train and empower youth to understand and participate in the civic process, presented to you July 3rd from the youth of City Nine."
Well, this is a morning full of surprises. Thank you, Juanita, and thanks to all of you. We've spent a lot of time together these last six months, and I love these kids, each and every one of them. They've grown up together, and they love each other, they've got good, strong friendships, and they, most of all, love their community, and they've got great skills, enthusiasm, energy, and commitment. I feel blessed that they helped me on my campaign, and I'm also blessed to have a godmother like Juanita, and to know that Juanita and all of these kids will be here with me every single step of the way to make sure that I stay on the straight and narrow, and to remind all of you that this is what it's all about, and this is why we're here, to make sure that their needs are met and they are able to live the best life ever. So, thanks so much to all of you. God bless.
What's going on here?
Can I ask, well, I got some sound now. I just want to make one correction to Juanita. She did have at least one council endorsement, and that was mine. I don't know who else did. I think Cindy did also, so you're close, Juanita, but some of us did endorse her.
You're 100% right, Hal, and I didn't talk about endorsements, I talked about streetwalkers and press fleshers. And thank you very much for all that you did because you've always been here for Concerned Citizens, and as I told you yesterday, I'll love you forever because you've always been here for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tate, and congratulations, Ms. Perry. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Mr. President, the first order of business is approval of the minutes. Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Holden seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Those should be approved. Mr. President, before starting the regular meeting, item number 23, a request from Council District Six, this matter be continued until July 10th. Without objection, that item is continued. On the regular agenda, items number one through six are items noticed for public hearing. I believe there have been individuals that have requested to speak on items two and three. We do have cards on item two and three. We will call those special. We have items one, four, five, and six remaining. Clerk, please open the roll on those items. Any other specials, colleagues, before we take a vote? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item. Items number 17 to 18 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number eight, a motion is required inasmuch as there's two reports on one file. Is that item seven through 18, correct? Seven through 18. Okay, we will call item eight special. We have a card on that item. Any members of the public wishing to speak on any of the remaining items? If not colleagues, any specials? Mr. Garcetti calls item eight special. We've already called that special. There's cards on that item. I see hands in the public. We call that item special. We will come back to number two. Colleagues, any other specials? I believe we have seven through 18 with the exception of number eight. Clerk, please open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Had a request for continuance in item number 12. Colleagues, unless there's concern or opposition, we will reconsider item number 12 and continue that item for how much time, Mr. Ridley Thomas? Three-week continuance. Three weeks would be July 24th. Okay, that item is continued, and the remaining items have been approved. Next item, please. Items number 19 through 29 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Okay, we have cards on items 19, 22, 23, 25, 26, 28, and 29. Those will be called special. Are there members of the public wishing to speak on any other items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Colleagues, any specials? Seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please. On the supplemental agenda, items number 31 and 32 are items for which public hearings have been held. We don't have cards on either of those items, and public hearings have been held. Colleagues, any specials? Items 31 and 32. Seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. It will take just a moment.
14 ayes.
14 ayes. Those items are approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, items number 33 through 36 on the supplemental agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 33 and 36? 33 through 36. I believe there's an ordinance on number 36 at this time. That is correct. Items 33 through 36. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on any of those items? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Colleagues, any specials? Items 33 through 36. Mr. Garcetti calls item 36 special. Colleagues, any other specials? Seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please. Item number 30 is a closed-session item. Would you wish to keep that on the desk? Let's leave that on the desk and... That brings you back to public hearing items. Item number two. Item number two. We have some cards on item number two. Will the following people please come forward to the microphone? First, Maria Trujillo.
Since this is the first time I've been in this situation...
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay. Since this is the first time I've been in this situation, I would like to read to the members of the council the following. I like to express my feelings, and I demand some answers to the questions below since I didn't receive any satisfying answer in the previous hearing. Unfortunately, I was not aware that I would likely be responsible for the maintenance of the streetlights that were placed on my property without my permission. I have the right to build only one home on my property despite my attempts with the city to have permits to build four homes for my family. I was denied the... I was denied the right every time. I do not understand why those lights were placed on my property. I am potentially a single resident. I provided urban waste on Eastman some time ago for the development of some forty-plus homes. Why aren't they paying for the lights? Why isn't my neighbor paying for any lights? Furthermore, why were no lights placed on his property? I am sure how many homes he can build on his property. I am sure it is not one like it is on my property. Where is the justice? This is not fair. And why were lights placed on my property without my permission? Is this legal? I don't think so. As you can see in the Eastman, dedicated to the city, for the Bell Canyon Road, according to our request, there is no plans for lights. So, I would like to have some answers. And here is somebody would like to see the two on the Eastman.
Thank you very much for your comments. That was the only speaker card on this item. The public hearing is now closed. Colleagues, anybody wishing to speak on this item? Clerk, please open the roll on item number two. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number three, also item noticed for public hearing and an ordinance.
There's Mr. Larry Green wishing to testify on this item. Mr. Green?
Good morning, Mr. President, and congratulations on your new job.
Thank you.
I must say, my staff, and I do have a staff, told me this morning that you went to MIT. And of course, my brother and my sister-in-law are graduates of MIT, and I know you're a very intelligent guy. And if nothing else, with you as president and Mark Ridley-Thomas as president pro tem, I'm reminded of the Bob Dylan song, "The Times They Were Changing," and it's wonderful and change is great. Congratulations to both of you. But about item number three, this is a continued consideration of hearing protest and ordinance first consideration relative to the improvement and maintenance of the Sweetsor Avenue and Melrose Avenue lighting district. Well, I don't actually live in that area. I live down near Melrose and Highland. But I'm a little concerned about the streets on Kowenga, the potholes on Kowenga. And maybe you can give me a little bit more information on the assessment at Melrose and Sweetsor. I think Melrose and Sweetsor is a pretty comfortable area. I don't see they have a lot of problems over there. Why, they should have an assessment. What about the area on Kowenga, Rosewood, Melrose and Highland? We have nothing but potholes. Congratulations again on your appointment, President.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing. Colleagues, any members wishing to speak on item number three? Seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll on item number three. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved.
Mr. President, I understand that item number eighteen, there's a request to have it reconsidered by Councilmember Reyes forasmuch as eighteen A, which has been distributed.
Any members disagreements? Seeing none, we will reconsider item number eighteen. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, Council President, fellow councilmembers. We're just asking for an amendment to transfer funds from Prop. A to the current fiscal year. We do have staff present to ask to answer any questions you might have.
Has that amending item been distributed? Okay, we have before us item number eighteen as amended. Any other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll on item number eighteen. I see it now. Computers are working a little slow this morning. Mr. Burnson?
Ed, what are you asking? You're asking additional funds to be transferred, or what?
No, it's not additional funds, but it's funds that remain from last year, moving forward to this year.
To this year? Is there somebody here from DOT?
Yes.
Is there a problem with this?
Basically, my name is Sammy Wassa from DOT. Good morning. Last year, one and a half million dollars were assigned from Prop. A for staff to work on the Pasadena Blue Line. We were able to use a little over nine hundred thousand, so we're requesting that the remainder be transferred to this year.
Is there money in this year's? There is money in this year's budget for it also, is there not?
There is money, and that will be added to it, basically.
Well, is that... I'm just asking you if there is an abundance of money or whether this year's money is adequate. Otherwise, that money could be available for other projects in the city if it's not needed.
Actually, the one and a half million available for this year started out as being adequate. However, the Pasadena line has been compressing their schedule because they've come up against problems, so that additional money left over will be needed. I'm sure a lot of it will be needed for this year.
A lot of it? Well, it is in a separate... It's in a separate fund right now. It's not part of any other allocation of the general fund now, right?
It is in a separate fund, yes.
So, it could be transferred as it's needed, is that not correct?
It could be transferred as needed.
Well, Ed, why don't... Rather than to transfer it all now, why don't you... You know, obviously, it's been set aside for that, and, you know, they like to get all the money they can so they can spend it. But if it's not needed, I think it would be wise to keep this fund separate, and if they need additional funds, let them come in and show us why they need it, how they need it, and then I think the motion would be in order then. But just to transfer it all without... You have something to add to this, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Let me hear it.
We have prepared an earlier report that went through the Transportation Committee that recommended and subsequently is approved by the council this exact action, and that included the reappraisal of this money from last year's budget at this point in time.
I don't have any problem with it being used for that purpose which it was set aside for, okay? What I do have a problem with, and not just on this project, but any project that we have, is money to be transferred that is not needed, that could be utilized for some other use rather than just staff work, you know? And you're our CAO. Well, you will be after we take care of thirty-six. And welcome back.
Thank you very much.
But, you know, I think it's up to you to tell us whether the money is needed now. If it's needed now and it's intended for that, I don't have a problem in the world. I've been very supportive of that line, both here and also on the MTA, Ed. So, you know, the question is, is it needed now? If it is, fine, then let's transfer it. If it's not needed now, let's transfer it when and if it's needed.
I think what I would suggest is that maybe the best way to deal with this, again, because of the compression of the schedule of the Pasadena line, and it's a design-built contract that we're trying to deal with, that the money gets transferred and as we get a handle on the schedule, let's say in three months, we can come back to council and say, "We are not going to need all of this money. We can take some of it back or do something else with it." That may be the...
You know that's not going to happen, don't you?
Well, if you ask me to do it, I will do it.
Hal, I think it's important to note that this is a project that has very constricted timeframes.
I'm very much aware of it, and, you know, and I've been supportive of it. I just want to make sure we're not transferring...
Other members wishing to speak on this item? If you have... There's other members wishing to speak on this item? If you have additional questions?
Really?
If you have additional questions, I'd ask that you push the button again.
If it's needed now, I'll support it. But I just...
Appreciate that.
I'm raising the issue.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Mr. President, I'm going to move suspension of the rules so that we can take up another item. Are we prepared to dispose of this at this point?
Excuse me?
Are there other speakers wishing to be heard on this item?
You are the only other speaker.
I was going to move suspension of the rules so that we can take up another item, but I suspect we should dispose of this item first so that I can do that.
Yes, please.
So, in that sense, I'll move the previous question.
Thank you. And as you know, there's also an amendment to this, to just move some money around to deal with overtime issues for staff.
Mr. Reyes, you wish to reconsider the item? Is there anything else you wish to add?
I'd like to move on eighteen A.
Okay. Colleagues, in the opposition to the amendment, first of all, seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll on item number eighteen as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Eighteen A as amended is approved.
Very much.
And there is a request to suspend the rules and take an item out of order. Mr. Ridley-Thomas?
Mr. President, let the record reflect that Mr. Reyes commanded unanimous vote on his first roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I would rise to move suspension of the... Burnson says you want to reconsider it, Ed. Move suspension of the rules so that we can take item number thirty-six out of order at the request of the head of ORES, soon to be otherwise named, if the council so acts, as there are several persons in the audience here to be heard. Sir?
Sure. We shall do that. Item thirty-six is now taken out of order. Mr. Garcetti had to call this item special. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti first.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations.
Can I ask you to push your button, please?
Sorry?
Okay.
I called this special because I think it's very important for the public and for the new members, many of whom probably know the history, but for those of us who would like to maybe know it a little more detailed, I don't think there's any opposition to this, but I think it's important for the public to know about this change, how it came about in the first place, and why we're changing it back. So, I was wondering if we could call on Bill to just come and give us a little history of why the CAO became ORES and why it may be going back today.
I want to be careful as possible in my comments. The CAO, or the city's administrative office, has been the principal office responsible for monitoring the city's finances, preparing the budget, and assisting both the mayor and council in ensuring that the budget is managed in the most efficient and effective way possible. As a consequence of the new charter, the name of the CAO was changed to the Office of Administrative and Research Services. I think that name with the acronym of ORES does not accurately nor effectively describe exactly what the office does and the role and the importance of the office, especially as the office that helps you, the city council, and then the mayor manage the city's finances. I ask that today, you have a motion before you to return our name to the CAO. This is not just a symbolic gesture. This, the office of... The name CAO, the city administrative office, is exactly that. It is your administrative office. It's the only office in the city that supports and reports to both the mayor and the city council. We pride ourselves on our independent, objective, and extremely accurate analysis of your city finances.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Any further questions? If not, the chair recognizes Councilmember Ms. Ikowsk.
Thank you, Mr. President. As one of the makers of this motion, I just rise to confirm what Mr. Fujioka has said. And it's very interesting, although the office name was changed with the charter, we are still... We still call it the CAO. We still call Mr. Fujioka and his predecessor, Mr. Comery, the CAO. It's easier, it's easier to understand. ORES is... It's an awkward acronym. I think that the charter did appropriately create new financial positions in the Office of Finance, appropriately dealing with risk management. But our Budget Director, our President of the Budget, our President of Financial Information, and particularly a lot as it relates to grants from federal agencies, from state agencies, that office through which it all flows is this office, which is our, I believe, city administrative office. And so, I think that the title more closely reflects what it does, and that's why I was happy to present this with former Councilmember Chek and former Councilmember Fuhr.
Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, today we are changing the name. I will share with you that I believe Councilmember Han... I know Councilmember Han, and I agreed on this issue as Charter Reform Commissioners. I'm not sure where Councilmember Zine was. But I lost this debate in the commission. I did not ever want the CAO's office to change in any manner from the old dual reporting responsibilities that it had. I had always argued that the CAO's office was our... And I say this with the utmost respect. I considered the CAO's office our internet reference librarian, in the sense that it was their responsibility to give us the most objective information so that we, as policymakers, could make decisions. I was unable to convince my peers on the Charter Reform Commission. I see this as a step in the right direction. I will reevaluate the charter and may come back and present a reconfigured CAO that reestablishes that dual reporting, because I believe that that is one way where we get straight facts and honest information to make our decision. So, I do support this motion, and we'll be looking at this much closer to see if we should go back to the system that was under the old charter. So, I'd ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I also rise to say, as one of the authors of our new city charter, I will not... I will try not to be too touchy about any time we want to change that wonderful document. But I will agree with my colleague, Mr. Pacheco, that this was not our intent to change the name of this office, and clearly, this was one of the more confusing things that came out of our new charter. So, in respect for the confusion that it's caused and to realize that the office is the same, I certainly support this motion to return the name to the former name of the office. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think change ought to be wrought when there is something meaningful to be achieved. And I think that the change that moved us from a clear, crisp, functional designation to something that is yet to be fully understood and/or appreciated and further almost serves as a metaphor for something that we may not want to think about that often, doesn't serve us well. And so, the opportunity to reclaim that which provides clarity gives those men and women in the department, those professionals, those civil servants, those public servants, a sense of approbation is, in my view, appropriate. I rise to encourage us to unanimously adopt item number thirty-six as it is before us and that we prepare the ordinance to restore clarity and functionality to the office of the city administrative officer.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Along with my two former Charter Commission colleagues, I join in asking City Council to support this name change back to the original name. I think it serves a purpose to have identity, and when I hear ORES, I wonder where the boat is. There's the ORES, where's the boat? So, I think it's practical that it worked for many, many years, and I know Bill Fujioka, the general manager, would be pleased if this would happen. I'm sure the many employees that he has in his office would be very pleased with it. So, I too would join with my colleagues and ask that we vote yea on this.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Wax.
Mr. President, members of council, I think while I support this, more important than what the name of the office is, is to remember what the function is and who the office serves. I, over the years, relied very heavily upon the information that was presented to me by the CAO. We're the policymakers, and we ultimately make decisions after we weigh and balance that information. But we can't do our job without having the information and the facts before us, and we relied on the CAO over the years. One of the saddest things in the recent years was to see a battle between the mayor and the council of somehow that the CAO serves one body and not the other. The CAO is there to do a job, and that's to present the decision-makers, whether they be the mayor, the council, the city attorney, the comptroller, or whoever else, with the facts they need to do their job, and with the public, with the facts they need to weigh in on issues. And as we go to a neighborhood council system, hopefully a meaningful one whereby people will be given early notification and information in advance of these decisions, they're going to need that information. And this isn't someone who works for one branch and not the other. This is someone who works for all branches, including the neighborhood council system and the public. And I think that hopefully, as we change the name back, we restore that... that hopefully, as we change the name back, we restore that understanding of that function, that the CAO is here to serve everyone in this city and everyone equally, and will all benefit from it. And maybe we can use this as the opportunity to make that very, very clear.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Question, please?
And there are no additional members wishing to speak. Was there a staff recommendation on this item, an ORS report?
There is an ordinance on the file.
Clerk, will you please open the roll on the item? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Move. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, please let the record reflect that Ms. Calantra is within chambers. Do we need to reopen the ordinance?
The ordinance...
Do we need to reopen the rolls to reflect that?
We can mark her down as an approval, as a yes vote.
Ms. Calantra votes yes. And, Mr. Clerk, would you please, please, please-
This was only item.
-send that item forthwith? Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I suspect the moral of this story has to be never underestimate William Fujioka.
Next item, please.
Item number eight, called special by councilmember Garcetti. This is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
The item has been called special, and we do have cards on this item. Colleagues, is there a motion to have a five-minute or ten-minute public hearing on this item?
I move to have a ten-minute public hearing on this.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll reopen the public hearing. There are three speaker cards. Mr. Larry Green. Following Mr. Green will be Mr. John Walsh.
Good morning. I'm Larry Green. I think we've lost our mind this morning. We just spent about fifteen or twenty minutes talking about what to name an office, and then people were applauding wildly because you changed the name the way they wanted. Is that the major problem in the city of L.A.? Anyway, thank you. Congratulations, Councilmember Perry. I'm a big fan of yours. And Councilman Reyes, too. Welcome. Wait till public comment. I'll get more serious. Item number eight is a Community Economic Development and Housing Community Redevelopment Committee's report relative to the live broadcast theater at Hollywood Boulevard and Highland. Well, in fact, that's the thirteenth district, and I live on the cusp of the thirteenth. I live in the fourth district. I live in Melrose and Las Palmas. And I think it's great what's going on over Hollywood and Highland. I think it's a wonderful development. It's going to be where the Oscars are going to be. It's going to be where there's going to be, it's going to change the whole face of Hollywood. And it's wonderful. I know there are some homeowners that don't like what's going on in Hollywood and Highland, but, you know, tough noogies. It's great for everybody. It's lots of jobs. It's going to bring in lots of jobs to the whole area. And when I see a live broadcast, I got to tell you, a live broadcast theater, a lot of people in this city are in the entertainment business, and maybe you're not, but I'm a member of the Screen Actors Guild. I pay my dues. I've been in lots of movies and videos. And I want to echo my support to item number eight. Unequivocally, Larry Green supports live broadcast theater at Hollywood and Highland. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. John Walsh. Following Mr. Walsh, Madeline Janice Aparicio.
Wait a second. Where's Ms. Calantra? I got here late. Why, oh, what, oh, I'm sorry. Oh. That's what happens if you get here late. Alex Padilla, you are a worthy successor to Ms. Calantra. Now, the New Times called her snotty, and I've said in their support that she's the, one of the least snotty people running a meeting, because I'm damning her with faint praise, but that's another story. The last mega mall in history, the White Elephant Project, one hundred and fifty million dollars' worth of city bonds for Trizakhan, welfare for the rich. You know, trickle-down isn't just with Ronnie Reagan. It's with phony liberals, too. And one hundred and fifty million and four billion dollars is going to stop gangsters from selling heroin and crack cocaine a block from there where I live? No. And I'm telling you, it's going to be a disaster. And now you're taking HUD money that could be spent on housing to build a live theater. Well, I'm telling you, the poor in this city didn't put any money in your campaigns. And you're going to put H-HUD Urban Development action money. What kind of action? What kind of development? How is that going to raise the neighborhood? Those people all live in the damn San Fernando Valley who work down there. And I'm going to tell you right now, those two twin elephants come to Hollywood and see a two-hundred-million-dollar over budget, a year behind schedule, the worst mall in the world. And I'll finish by saying, they promised us Trizakhan one-of-a-kind tenants. And they just mentioned and announced their big tenant, Victoria's Secret. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want trashy lingerie, you don't just have to go to Franklin's. You can go to the multi-billion-dollar mega mall and take a look at the lingerie on the White Elephant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madeline Janice Aparicio, followed by Ms. Sonia Ransom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate you and also, Mr. President Protem. This is a very exciting new time. I'm actually up here speaking somewhat reluctantly. Some may know that historically, the Living Wage Coalition and many of the groups that we work with have supported this project as one that not only will bring the exciting Academy Awards to Hollywood, but will also bring potentially thousands of living wage jobs. Unfortunately, three years ago, when this project was approved, we had a real challenge, and that was that the city's living wage ordinance didn't cover tenants on redevelopment property. And the vast majority of the jobs here are going to be in the mall and with the tenants. So three years ago, Trizakhan agreed to something that we thought was exciting at the time, which was to actively promote living wage and to bring us together with the tenants and try to voluntarily get the tenants to comply with living wage. Unfortunately, I'm really sorry to say today that that was not a success and that there are going to be the vast majority, if not all, the tenants, I'm not talking about the Trizakhan's own contractors, which will be living wage, but the tenants themselves will not. So there will be a lot of not very good jobs in this project. I'm not here to oppose the project. I think that this is going to be an exciting project in many ways. But I just want to, we want to raise this as a challenge to this new leadership of the city council, of the new mayor, that we've got to figure out when this substantial amount of city money is involved in going for economic development, we need to figure out a way to require the tenants to achieve that the tenants in the redevelopment projects pay a living wage, create good jobs. So I'm really putting this out as a challenge, and it's actually good to look back and evaluate what we've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sonia Ransom, please.
Hi, I'm Sonia Ransom. I represent Trizakhan. And I'm just here to thank the council for its support historically and to remind everybody that the money at stake here, which is HUD money, will not go to Trizakhan. It's money that will go to CDD, who will then loan it to the CRA. In this project, the city acquired two public assets, the theater and a garage, so it is not a public infusion without benefits to the city. And it's been a long, protracted process for CDD and the CRA to work with HUD for the reprogramming of this grant money. We're pretty close. And whether or not the HUD funds this grant, the CRA is obligated under the DDA to reimburse Trizakhan for certain land costs that Trizakhan expended upfront. I appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing on this item. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if we could ask Sonia to step up to ask just a couple of questions from Trizakhan. It's true what was just said for the council members who are listening, that this is federal money, and this just allows the CRA to enter into agreement in order to get the federal money. But there are a couple of questions I want to take the opportunity to ask you now, if I may.
Sure.
One, could you tell us what the status of the living wage is right now in the project? And secondly, how many of the tenants, if any, you anticipate will be paying their employees a living wage?
Councilman Garcetti, I apologize. I am not the person, either from Trizakhan or from Alan Mettkins, who's been working on that element of the project, and I would not want to give the council incorrect information. I would be happy to follow up after the meeting and provide your office with the information that you're asking for. I also would extend to the speaker who spoke prior to me. I know that she has been involved in many discussions with Trizakhan and with Jerry Newman of my office. I'm sure they plan to continue those discussions. I think that, as you all probably know, it's been a real struggle for Trizakhan to lease the project in the manner that they want, to develop the kind of project that will be such a pioneering project in Hollywood. And I think there's a tension between tenant attraction and satisfying the goals that you're looking to be satisfied. And I think it's an ongoing struggle that we have to work on together.
Thank you. I would just give a note of caution to all council members. When looking at development projects in their district, it's true, what John brought up before John Walsh about the public monies that we are spending, it was with the idea that there was going to be some exchange in terms of getting living wage jobs out of this. And as Madeline Janice Aparicio said, we somehow have failed in that project. We have not achieved what the council unanimously believed it could obtain. And that will really require some rethinking of how we can go about and achieve these goals and do it in an effective way so that public monies aren't misspent, just merely subsidizing a project without the human payoff that we were all hoping for. Until we can get the answers to those questions there, I would then move to continue this for one week until we can find out more information.
Thank you. There is a motion for a continuance. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
I'll support and second the motion continuance, and I don't have any objection.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Wax.
Well, I would like to second Mr. Garcetti's motion and also to ask for more of an amplification on, I think you said that basically this money would cover money that the city would otherwise be obligated under the development agreement. Is that true? Is this basically going to be his federal money to satisfy some of the obligations the city's already incurred under the development agreement?
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yeah, I thought, I heard you say that.
Yes, I did. Under the DDA, the obligation was that, the way it was basically structured, was that bonds were issued to pay sixty million dollars for the parking structure, thirty million dollars for the theater, six-point-eight million dollars in land acquisition costs, and one-point-two million dollars for the mitigation of the impacts of the public facilities, the theater and the parking structure. So the concept behind filing the application for the UDAG was as part of the land acquisition cost, so it will go to pay four-point-two-five million of this-
Which we would otherwise have to find other funds for.
Correct.
All right. I wanted to clarify that because I'm one of the two people who voted against this in the first place. And I did so not because I didn't think that the project should be in Hollywood, but I couldn't believe that one of the world's richest developers, a multi-billion-dollar developer, I think the third or fourth richest in the world, was coming to the city council for the kind of subsidy that it was getting. And it did very much like others do. The analogy to sports teams is clear. In this case, it was we got to save the Academy Awards, and we're going to get all these fabulous jobs. And it sort of bought off the unions by giving them what I believe the union should have anyway as a matter of right. And I'm glad Ms. Janice Aparicio is here now, because it raises a bigger issue. This city shouldn't sell out so cheaply for things that it should be requiring in the first place. And I think that the application and the extension of the living wage ordinance is one of those things that ought to be a broader city policy and shouldn't have to spend the kind of money that we gave these people in order to get that. And now to find out we may not even be getting what we bargained for, it just sort of, it's the old "I told you so," but it happens all the time around here. We don't, we've got to just be more diligent in what we demand of people and what we give people. The Academy Awards weren't leaving town, believe me. And the living wage isn't the reality that it should be. And there are a lot of other things that have to also be put into the pot as well. I share Mr. Walsh's feelings about this, and that's one of the reasons I voted against it. On the other hand, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do something just to spite myself. If, in fact, I can get four million dollars of federal funds to be used for something that I'm otherwise going to have to find other funds to use for around here, I'm going to take them, because that obligation has already been there. But I'm going to use it as an opportunity to ask the questions that I think you're asking a week's continuance to ask, and an opportunity to make sure that we at least get as much of what we tried to bargain for in the first place out of this. But this whole project is a project in which the city was willing to give far too much than it had to give, I believe, to make it a reality, and just skews our sense of priorities. You cannot allow people like this to come in and just sort of browbeat you into giving all kinds of things in the name of, well, if you don't do it, we're not going to do it. And the lesson for that will be in another project coming along soon in the ninth district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wax. The chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the continuation so that the new member may have an opportunity to review it. But I have to find some deference with Mr. Wax's remarks. This is not just about this developer. This is about Hollywood and the resurgence and recovery that Hollywood has made. And we struggled with this project in planning committee and other things. And, you know, in order to get something, sometimes you have to make an investment. Without that investment, it may be true, this developer may have all the money in the world, but is he willing to come to Hollywood and do something that's going to help bootstrap that community, which is making a remarkable recovery with its community, with its redevelopment project, which is only the second, only this, really only, probably the first successful redevelopment project in the city, believe it or not. The rest have not been successful. This one is, and perhaps North Hollywood will prove to be. But let's not lose something. Obviously, they have to keep their commitments. That's a must. We always, we always need to say that if somebody makes a commitment to us, put their feet to the fire and make sure they do it. But let's not blow it, because Hollywood does need this project.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. You're the final speaker on this item. There is a motion, colleagues, for a one-week continuance. Clerk, please open the roll on the motion to continue. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is continued. Next item.
Item number nineteen on the regular agenda, item for which public hearing has not been held.
We have two cards submitted on this item as part of the public hearing. First, I'll call forward Mr. Larry Green, to be followed by John Walsh.
Good morning. My name is Larry Green, and I think one of the problems people have when they come to these meetings is sometimes they're lobbyists who register with the city. Sometimes somebody comes to talk on one issue. Those of you that are watching on the replay, I know many of you are working right now, and many of you are eagerly watching tonight. It's probably, oh, I don't know, maybe nine, nine-fifteen on the replay. And this item, number nineteen, has to do with setting up a bid, bid for those that are not devotees of city council meetings, as I, Larry Green, am. Stands for Business Improvement District in Northridge. Now, we know that Northridge is a long way from Melrose and Highland, where I live, in the fourth district. But although it's not in my district, I support it. I had the pleasure of talking with a couple of people from Northridge. I met Professor Hennessy and Sam, whose last name escapes me, who works with the Northridge bid. And I support it. They're doing some great stuff over there in Northridge. Cal State Northridge is a great university with a great Department of Business. And I definitely do support item nineteen, although it is not in my district. We have to get over that "not in my district" mentality. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Walsh, please.
We need performance audits on every BID in this city. There is a vote based on assessed valuation. If the majority of the assessed valuation in a proposed BID votes for it, everybody is levied a tax. They call it an assessment. It's a tax. If you are a property owner and don't pay your assessment after the election, the city will attach your property. They are meeting in closed session, taking this money- They are meeting in closed session, taking this money, this pseudo-tax money, and spending it, in many cases, on corrupt contracts to their friends. Now, there was, Jackie Goldberg sponsored in Sacramento a bill to exempt BIDs from the Brown Act, Public Comment. When people in Hollywood on the BID was asked why, they said, "Because John Walsh might come to the meeting." So, in fact, I had legis, they had legislation sponsored in Sacramento to prevent me from speaking. It's the greatest honor I have ever received. And I want to know, I want to thank the First Amendment Coalition for fighting Jackie Goldberg, the enemy of free speech when it hurts her, and turning the bill around 180 degrees. So now the bill guarantees essentially Brown Act rights throughout the state of California. So all the other John Walshes, from Mucaya to San Diego, can get up and say, "How is the money being spent?" And I'll finish by saying, it's just not the businesses. The owner of my apartment building has to pay this assessment. And if he doesn't own it, guess what? The city will own my apartment building. And I just want you to know that both the owner of my apartment building, my landlord, and the tenants can agree on one thing. Certainly in Hollywood, we are getting bupkis out of the BID. Ask Ms. Galanta what bupkis means. Alex.
I just might. Thank you very much. That concludes the public comment on this item. Are there any members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
The result of the vote is a 38 percent protest, which means the council is free to move forward with the Business Improvement District by adopting the ordinance.
There's been a motion to approve. Counsel, the clerk. Yes, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-two. A member of the public wishes to speak. It's on an item for which public hearing has not been held.
We'll begin with Quincy. Don't have a last name, but Quincy, to be followed by Mr. John Walsh.
That was my nom de guerre in the Santa Monica Council elections. Let's see. Okay, the important thing about the special election, which is both a primary and general election, is about the primary elections of 2000. And the Voting Rights Act, this is the part that's most important because the primary was subverted because Al Gore made a deal with the Supreme Court on March 27th, 2000 that has not been publicized at all, which was, a very small part of the Voting Rights Act.
Keep your comments relevant to the item before us, please.
Was declared unconstitutional. And it's important that that be addressed by somebody, somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Walsh, please.
I'm asking you to ask the supervisors to audit, to do a performance audit on the last election. As you know, some people in, I believe it was the Fifth District, Mr. Weiss's district, went to vote and found that their place of voting place wasn't there. They were wandering around. There were many irregularities in the last election. Now, I'm asking the people who won the election to do an investigation on why their opponents lost the election. So I don't think I'm going to get much out of you, but you're a hostage, you're being held hostage by the county because the county is responsible for this. And when we have irregularities, why? How did it happen? I ask you to, I ask what I want to ask you to do, form a committee to study it. Nothing, this city council does nothing better for you new people than form committees to study things and then put it in file, on file. Afterwards, you put what's called "on file," it's the deep freeze at the city council. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing on this item. Colleagues, any members wishing to speak? Mr. Clerk, any comments?
Standard request to the county for assistance.
Thank you. Clerk, please open the roll on the item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-five, as an item for which public hearing has not been held, a, there is a member of the public who wishes to speak.
Forthwith on nineteen, please. We will go to item number twenty-five and come back to item number twenty-three. Item number twenty-five, public comment. Call forward Mr. Larry Green.
Twenty-three was contained.
I will be very, very, very brief on this item, but it's an important item. This is a settlement claim filed by Clarence Chance against the City of L.A. and its employees. And it's, for those that are watching on the replay at night, it's to pay out $88,920, a lot of money, $6,179 payable to Clarence Chance monthly, $20,000, $12,000, $31,000 payable to the Settlement Funding LLC in the year 2001, $5,079, et cetera, $3,929 payable the years after. Well, this is one of the problems in the cities, we're paying out money on lawsuits instead of going to court. I'd like to know a little bit more facts. Who is Clarence Chance? Why? I'm stupid. I don't know, I don't know everything. When I don't know the answer, I say, "I don't know. Maybe this is a very well-known lawsuit. I've never heard of this." I did hear about Benny Powell. That's why I didn't sign up for item number twenty-six. Maybe somebody could tell me, who is Clarence Chance and what did he do, what did the city do wrong that he gets $88,920? That's a lot of money. We could fix some of those potholes on Rosewood and Kuwenga with that money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing on this item. Any members wishing to speak? If not, I will call upon the city attorney for some comments.
Yes, members, this is a settlement that happened quite a while ago, and every year we are obligated to give, to appropriate this amount of money. There were two gentlemen who were in prison and were later found to be improperly there. Therefore, this is one of the settlements that comes up every year. On July 1st, we appropriate the money. The other one was Mr. Powell, which was the other item, number twenty-six. So I would ask the council to please approve of this.
Thank you very much. Seeing no members wishing to speak on this item, clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Forthwith on that item. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-six, also an item for which public hearing has not been held. A member of the public wishes to speak.
Thank you very much. We have one card on this item. Mr. John Walsh.
Let me explain to the public what's happening here. This is the new charter. These settlements previously were done in the back room. I'd like to thank the Charter Commissioners for giving us a little fresh air on these settlements. Also, if you look at the fine print here, it's subject to the mayor's approval. Prior to yesterday, or the day before yesterday, the first, all of this happened right here in city council chambers and with the city attorney. The mayor had no say in the matter of how much money was thrown away on bogus lawsuits. Now, fortunately, it's out in the open. Of course, it's a two-edged sword because when the mayor signs off on something, he's not going to have you up here to pillory. He's going to have to take the blame, too. What we're going to see now is a lot of fighting over these cases of police brutality in Rampart. It's all going to come out in the wash. It's all going to be out there for everybody to see. Previously, it was in the back room. I've been going to these meetings off and on for 15 years. I've never seen an agenda item like this. And relax, I still have a job. I have not been fired by L.A. USD. I'm not coming here. I'm not here to haunt you. I'm just a temporary ghost. I won't be here. And I would also echo the previous speaker and like to know exactly why we are going to be paying this gentleman. How much money is it here? It's quite a sum of money. What's the story on Benny Powell?
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing on this item. Members, anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none? Does the attorney wish to comment on this item? Not necessary. Clerk, please open the roll on the item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. I did want to make a comment. Item number twenty-three had been continued or is continued. There are three cards that were submitted for peoples, persons wishing to speak on item twenty-three. The new date for the agenda of that item is July 10th. And if you wish, we will add your cards to the file and look for you on that date. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to call forthwith on item twenty-six?
Forthwith on item twenty-six.
Thank you. Item number twenty-eight, item for which public hearing has not been held. A member of the public wishes to speak.
Yes, we have one card on item number twenty-eight. Quincy, welcome back.
Hello, counsel, president. What, the grassroots, this is for the grassroots network of the League of California Cities, and they want to change their bylaws here. Now, this gives me an opportunity again to point out what happened with the Voting Rights Act. It was simply that the part about the oversight of the parties, state and national, was declared unconstitutional, which means that they can change their bylaws without a federal judge okaying it. That was the only part of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 that had to deal with the parties. That's the only oversight. If they change their bylaws, it has to be okayed by a federal judge. It did, but not after March 27th, 2000. Before, that was before the Arkansas Democratic primary, which allowed 22 percent of the Democratic primary electorate to be, have their votes stolen, and no delegates accorded them to the convention here in Los Angeles. It was, it was after the Michigan Democratic primary, which Mr. Gore did not win and Mr. Bradley did not win, and in which Mr. Bradley caved into the Gore faction before their so-called debate they had here, the Times-Law Opinion-CNN debate, which was a phony debate because Mr. Bradley had already given in to the Gore faction. And you can look this up on my website. I'm not running for council. However, it does say quincyforcouncil.homestead.com. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment on this item. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing none? Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Let's send that item forthwith. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-nine, is an item for which public hearing has not been held. A member of the public wishes to speak.
Will Quincy please come forward again? I'd like to remind you, please keep your comments relevant to the item before us.
Yeah.
And the item is in regards to the special election in the Fourth Council District.
Right. And I wanted to point out something about the neighborhood councils, which are going to be the key political entities.
The item before us is in regard to the special election in the Fourth Council District. I have to ask your comments to be directly relevant to that.
Well, they have their neighborhood councils, too.
Yes, they do, but the issue of neighborhood councils is not before us.
Well, I just wanted to point out that the key organization, it wasn't Ridden and Milken. They were just the front. It was the Rand Corporation that did the whole study and were the primary consultants to both the elected and the appointed Charter Reform Commissions. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment on this item. Any members wishing to speak? Seeing, any members wishing to speak? Seeing none? Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there's a few special motions that have arrived on the desk. The first special motion is brought in by Mr. Mark Ridley-Thomas, and findings need to be made by the city attorney.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Actually, Mr. Chair, there are actually two motions, and they are very similar. The first one is, the first one is regarding the LA Bridges Two Agency, and so is the second one. What happened was, these were brought in as Rule 16s, and they were meant to be brought on the calendar today. And what happened is that the contract has expired as of June 30th. Therefore, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act. Then you would vote on the motion, which is to approve the pending contracts.
It's fairly straightforward, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
The city attorney stated this was to be Rule 16 motion, and that obviously it was not posted as such. It was referred to committee inadvertently, and otherwise it would have been under judges today. Does that within itself constitute an urgency, therefore making it a special? Notwithstanding the fact that the contract has expired, that may have been the case, or you have non-performance, which is the history associated with the bridges, do you see any reason why this can, can, that has to be done today? I mean, that's outside of the rules of perhaps Rule 23.
My understanding is that the contractor will stop work, and it'll take several weeks to go back in. Perhaps Mr. Ridley-Thomas can better address this.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas, if I can ask you to press your button? Thank you.
That's right. We are under motion right now. Then we can discuss the issue.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
The city attorney, Mr. President, members of the council, does have it correct. The question before us is whether or not we wish to see a lapse in the provision of gang intervention services, and that would be the clear result as a result of not taking these actions.
Thank you very much. Madam City Attorney, we will consider special one or special two now.
You have to vote separately. I did make the findings for both of them, but I would suggest you start with the findings for special one, and then approve the motion, and then do the findings for special two and the motion.
Okay. Please open the roll on the findings for special number one. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Anybody wishing to speak on the matter itself? Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Right. Mr. Thomas, I'm sure can respond to this. I think this motion primarily deals with the fact that Say Yes was non-responsive, a non-compliance regarding LA Bridges Two. And I think their failures one through six is indicated in your motion, Mr. Thomas. And does this within itself represent a report from the department as it relates to their non-compliance? Or someone here from the department can tell us in more specific details what it really represents? And because, because it's part of my area, too, and I think yours, and so I just, it's like, I need to know.
Once again, Mr. President, members of the council, the objective here is to avoid lapse in services, and it is explicit as to what is being achieved. One agency has been determined less than acceptable, and as a result of the many discussions the council has had along these lines, a new agency is being proposed, as is indicated in the action item here. And this is essentially to move that contract forward.
My time, I think you must have held my time for that, I'm sure. My time, I'm suggesting that this may be true, and I have no reason to adopt what Mr. Thomas is saying, and we certainly would like to have those programs be continued, gang intervention, by the best organizations available to perform the services. I just want the department to tell me, if you will do that, about the organization that we are not considering to be defunct and being non-compliant, item one through six, and how do you come to that decision? To cause the motion to be drafted and action, subsequent action to be taken today. That's all I ask.
Greg Demmett, Community Development Department. What's contained in the motion was noted in the report to the committee.
Say that again?
I'm sorry. What was stated in the motion is contained in the report to the committee.
Is it contained in the report?
No, it's contained in the report.
Contained in the report to the committee? All right. So you did some investigation? You talked to somebody that said yes, organization? You talked to somebody at Say Yes organization? What actually happened to cause you to even state, set forth item one through six in terms of listing the failures? What did you do?
I'm sorry, I'm the liaison for the department. I don't actually work on this, on this particular program.
But somebody in the department obviously did. Otherwise, this recommendation would not be before us. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right, then. Who did, and what?
I'll be happy to have them here, sir.
Well, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
I think it's a reasonable request, Mr. Thomas. What do you think? I think we should have got to make a record here, just in case somebody comes back at some time and say, "You shouldn't have done that to us." I think you got to make a record that department went out of due diligence, checked out certain things, and find non-compliance.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Mr. President, that's denoted in the motion, and not only that, but the record, there's a rather extensive documentation procedure.
I don't have that.
That's a part of the report. You cannot summarily terminate a contract without
A report.
...appropriate documentation, so you can be fully assured that such is the case.
Well, I don't have the report, and that's what I'm talking about.
All right, well, then it seems to me that the report can and should be made available to all members.
That is correct.
Absolutely.
All members, we should have the report. Will you make that available?
Yes, I certainly will.
We're holding it at table, so you make the report, or you can continue it until such time as they do.
Well, I think it would be a mistake to continue it. Once again, you have services at risk. The report is peremptory.
I take your
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Holden. We are near the end of our agenda.
Let me have the report, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. There are now three additional members wishing to speak on this item. Chair recognizes Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a member of the committee that did hear this, I would just confirm that what Mr. Ridley-Thomas indicated, that this was not only brought to our attention in committee through CDD, but also through CDD's outside consultants. And members of the council, you might remember that L.A. Bridges in total has been of concern about its audit performance, its financial auditing stake, and we have finally arrived at a thorough and complete analysis and audit, and comparison, actually, in terms of those who are providing services throughout the program, rating those both that were doing very, very well, and should be used as a model for others to achieve the higher level, areas of improvement that are needed in some instances, and in this instance, a discontinuation of, a recommendation for discontinuation of the service, and an alternate provider chosen for, for issues that were raised within the report that were substantiated and substantive. And so I rise with Mr. Ridley-Thomas to say that it's appropriate to do this, so that there's not a discontinuance of existing service to particularly the kids who need it. These are at youth risk with programs that are necessary, that have been doing terrific when they are well-served and well-performed. This instance was not that case, and so I think it is appropriate to, to make this substitution as recommended. As was indicated, it would have been on the agenda anyway as a Rule Sixteen, and I think substantively, it is supported by reports, it is reported, is supported by the evidence, and in fact, has been disclosed and made known to all parties, so I think we should move forward.
Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Just to clarify, if I may ask, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, this is, this is already, this is, we're talking about Unity Two, which is the agency that was identified because Say Yes failed to meet the criteria.
Correct.
So there should be no problem with this. I support this.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Previous question, sir.
I've spoken twice, and if you just, Mr. Thomas, you used some of my time permitted to make some additional comment.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Thank you. It's response to Ms. Sikowski, she said this was, went to a committee, and if that were the case, then we would have a committee report indicating committee's recommendation, and there's no such report before us. I talked to Mr. Thomas about this motion when he was going to introduce it initially, and requested that I co-authored the motion, and I suggested to him that I might not be able to do that, and gave him the reasons why. So if you're going to vote on this without having a report before you, which would give me some more reason to support it, I'm going to have to remove myself from the chambers while you vote on the matter, and I think Mr. Thomas is the way of it.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no additional members wishing to speak on this item. Clerk, please open the roll. Mr. Holden is now no longer in chambers. Can we lock that door?
Yeah.
I heard John Ferraro say that once. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved.
Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to introduce two international guests, Doctors Parowanda, would you please stand, from Indonesia? And his wife, would you please stand, ma'am? Thank you. And they are guests of one of our cable TV hosts, and one of the lead members of the county probation department, Ms. Dorothy Barton, constituent of the Mr. Dorothy, stand and let us recognize you as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, and welcome, welcome to the city of Los Angeles. Hope you enjoy your visit. Clerk, on the previous item, the city attorney has requested that we send that item forthwith. We shall do so. Next item, please.
Special Two, also on the desk and not on the agenda, is brought in by Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
We have dispensed with Special Number One. We still have Special Number Two on the desk. Mr. Ridley-Thomas, wish to speak?
Same issue applies. Mr. President, therefore, the need for urgency has arisen. We do not wish to put those youth at risk who are in fact benefiting from gang intervention services. Therefore, we ask for your unanimous support.
Madam City Attorney, on the findings.
Yes, you, you need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to act. This was inadvertently left off the council agenda.
Members wishing to speak on the findings? Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti. On the findings.
One question, thank you, Mr. President. The findings here, I believe, show that, that CDD has not yet completed the necessary work to release the RFP. I was just wondering if there's staff here to let us know when that might happen and why it has not?
Is there staff present on this item?
Greg Demmett, Community Development Department. I'll have to get that answer to you. I'm sorry, I'm the liaison for the department. I don't work directly with bridges, but I'll be happy to get that answer to you, sir.
Any other members wishing to speak on the findings? Seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Members wishing to speak now on the motion itself before us? Seeing none. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. We'll also send that item forthwith. Next item, please.
Mr. President, also not on the agenda, Special Number Three. It's a motion brought in by Mr. Wax. Mr. Wax will make the findings on this motion.
The chair recognizes Mr. Wax.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, I think the findings are self-evident, that we're now in the midst of the beginning of a heat wave which could last for a substantial period of time, and which history has shown us in other cities as well as ours, that extreme heat can be deadly, particularly to the elderly and the frail in our community. This is patterned very much along the lines of previous motions that this council has adopted in comparable situations, and that is to encourage all of the city personnel that are in the field, such as in the police department, Department of Water and Power, and others, as well as other governmental agencies, such as postal workers, county nursing homes, and others, to be on the lookout for many of the seniors who are frail, who live alone, who are often unable or hesitant to call for help at need, to look in after them, and to ask the public to do the same. Basically, if every one of us undertook to look out after one or two people that we know to be elderly, particularly living alone, there are a number of situations where we could save what could be a dire tragedy. All of the most, all of the requested actions here, except one, really can be acted upon now. The one about the water and power lifeline really would have, should really go to committee, because that isn't something that could be acted upon immediately, but something we would request the Department of Water and Power to do. But to not make turnoffs, particularly for people on lifelines during this period, to have a public awareness and education program, to step up our efforts individually and within each of the departments, and the police officers out on the field, postal workers and others, to look out after seniors. So hotlines are notified, are set forth in here, which people can call for further assistance. Last time, we were able to get many of the companies to donate fans and all that we were able to distribute through the senior centers. But a range of actions, and I've already spoken to Ms. Smith from the Department of Aging, from Wreckin' Parks and all, they're all prepared, chief, to move on this, but I think it's imperative that the council act to ask, request all of the different departments and other governmental agencies, as well as the public, and to remind the public that there's a lot that we can do, as I say individually, by looking out after friends or neighbors or family members. So I would move the findings and the adoption of all of the recommendations, except the one regarding the lifeline be referred to, water and power, to the, to the committee.
Thank you very much. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
The item is now before us. Councilmember Wax has suggested we send that one particular portion of the motion to the Department of Water and Power. Is it commission or committee? Mr. Wax.
It would actually be to the Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee.
Send that item, that portion of the item to committee. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please. Forthwith on that item.
Mr. President, item number thirty is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hear public comment prior to going into closed session?
Yes, let's hear public comment now. We have a few cards for public comment. Mr. Leonard Wayne Rose Jr.
Leonard Wayne Rose Jr., I got a very special letter here about the energy crisis and new transportation, because things get worse, but when I read this letter, you might understand what I'm talking about. Dear L.A. City Council, I am more concerned the energy crisis is that there may be low-cost home generator system, that the cost of electricity will not to be too high, the energy crisis be back to normal again. Generators will work, and like old folks' home hospital got generator, and confidence hospital got generator. If you have grandparents and, and your family need, need air conditioning, and they run by their own power, have, put gas in the generator, and you buy these generator as a Sears and Howard store, and then now back to gas. Make prevailing electricity and a motor system, even MTA and foot-tail bus train to get to work, and less traffic on freeway if go up on gas. Even some people will find a way, learn transportation to get to work or home or anywhere, like car, pool, bus, train, and plane, to get all that done if all city hall, county, MTA, foot-tail bus company to find a way to pay new transportation for people go anywhere, that will be less traffic. Like we see, that traffic on the freeway get jam-packed, and they think that all the high school going to graduate, and next June, there are going to be more traffic on the freeway, it's going to get worse, and if we get more transportation on, on foot-tail bus company, and things going to get better if we can to get together.
Thank you.
And I got a couple of this letter, but single light left turns. Thank you, your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marcia Hanscom?
Honorable council members, Honorable President Padilla, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name's Marcia Hanscom. I'm executive director of the Wetlands Action Network, and I'm also co-chair of Sierra Club California's Coast and Ocean Committee. We have two thousand members in Wetlands Action Network who live in the city of Los Angeles, and more than twenty thousand members of the Sierra Club in Los Angeles. I want to take this opportunity to say that you've all offering, you're all offering us, the citizens of this region, a glimmer of hope today, to the, to the many thousands of citizens who feel disaffected and unheard by city hall. And I ask that you remember every day, and read every day, the oath of office that you've taken here. Yesterday, the Daily News published a letter, letter to the editor written by someone who was disgusted that during public comments, council members were out of their seats, talking, chatting with lobbyists, eating their lunch, basically not listening to the public. That letter represents many, many people who have not been felt heard here, and I respectfully disagree with Councilmember Holden, who has, has suggested that term limits is a real problem. I think that term limits are actually offering us the potential to do something different here, so that one person like Joel Wax doesn't have to be by himself talking about how the problems are here, that maybe we could, we could come together and have some new thinking and collaboration about some of the very serious financial interests that are running this city. In the six years of working to protect the Biona Wetlands, I have had
If I can ask you to wrap it up, please.
...a meeting with only four council members, and I hope that you will open your offices, listen to the members of the public who want to be heard.
If I can ask you to wrap it up, please.
Absolutely. Comply with the Brown Act, and finally, remember that with the Biona Wetlands and Playa Vista issues, we are at the federal level, we are at the United States Supreme Court right now. We have a judicial conference in September, and we hope that you will not take any further action until this issue is, is resolved, whether or not
Thank you.
...an environmental impact statement is required. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mort Allen. To be followed by Leslie Purcell.
Try to make this as quick as possible. I've represented, I've been a Realtor in Studio City for forty years, been pretty involved in this. We have a really outstanding citizen in our community. You all know Joel Wax, who's taking off for a five-year vacation to New York to become probably the world leader in art, and while he's gone, our community is getting together, and with the help of the city, we plan to build the Joel Wax Modern Museum of, Museum of Modern Art, and we want to do it either at the Old Sportsman's Lodge or up in Franklin Canyon Park, and we think that we need this kind of art in Los Angeles. And I just want you to know that when Joel was elected thirty years ago, we got together, and we decided we were going to keep Studio City a quaint and romantic village like Westwood used to be, and as you all know, we have done it. We fought, we've kept Studio City where it's at. We started with a citizens' watchdog group, which we got through the Justice Department. It turned into the Studio City Residents Association, twenty-four hundred members. It is now a model for the citizens' watchdog groups, and we try to keep up with things. Now, we have a few issues that, I just want to bring up two things very fast. One, I want the new council to really think hard about something that tried to sneak through in a Rule Twenty-three last week, which is this thing about putting a hundred and fifty public toilets and thirty-four hundred freestanding billboards and all this other advertising on our sidewalks, which would conflict, conflict with the BIDs. I think something that big has to be heard before the council and not given just through a committee report.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
The other thing, I'm going to ask you all to kind of get together. We've had some very major damage done in the last election campaign with one industry.
Mr. Allen, if I can ask you to conclude, please.
Okay, let me just clear real quick, and that is the billboard industry. I will tell you that Eller Media is out of business in Los Angeles now. They've changed their name because of the damaging stuff that went on in the last, through the last election, and I think that with the help of Hal, we're going to get this all worked out, but I think we need to be really positive with all our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leslie Purcell, to be followed by Larry Green.
Good morning, Honorable President Padilla and the honorable city council members. I'd like to speak to you as someone who works with the Biona Wetlands Land Trust, and I feel like there were some real issues before many of you were here, actually. The city council passed the Melrose bonds and public housing bonds. This was a very large amount of money that was passed, and I feel like this might be something that the new city council could look at again, because something that the new city council could look at again, because there are still liability issues that are possibly going to be outstanding and affecting both this city council and a future city council and residents of L.A. I think this was, matter was passed through very, very quickly. I'd also like to address the public process. There were hearings where many people were not allowed to speak, and this has been a very controversial issue. We would like to see public hearings in the district for issues such as this, like Kathleen Connell held one public hearing, 500 people turned out. It was late in the afternoon and into the evening when people that work for a living could actually come and express themselves. I think this is very important. Other city councils do this, Santa Monica, Culver City, Berkeley, they have evening meetings when people can actually come and participate. I think that would be a big help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Larry Green to be followed by Mr. John Walsh.
Okay, well, I'm not last, so I, he's the best for last. I thought I was going to be last, so I'll be the next to best for John Walsh. First of all, in reference to the last speaker, I work for a living, and so do the city council people work for a living, and everybody can take time off from work and come to these meetings during the days, and I think it's fine to have meetings during the days, and there are hearings at night. And by the way, when time is limited at meetings, that's when items usually have been held already in public hearing, in committee hearings before the city council. So let's just be very clear, nobody's limiting people's right to speak from the city council standpoint, but I want to go into my little comments because they're really from the heart. I want to congratulate, first of all, Alex Padilla and Mark Ridley Thomas for their accomplishments today, and I think all the, and I'm a little emotional now because I am, I am Jewish, and I'm, although I'm not African-American and I'm not Hispanic, I have a lot, nothing but respect for how far you've gone in your life, Alex, and how far you've gone in your life. You know I admire both of you, and all the boys and girls that are home watching on TV tonight, particularly those of color, can consider the fact that neither Alex nor Mark Ridley Thomas came from wealthy homes. They worked their ways up, and who would have thought, I know Time and Newsweek and New York Times are going to be excited, that we've got a 20-year-old, 28-year-old president of the city council. John Ferraro would have been real proud. I only want to know, what are you going to do when you're an old man like me when you're 50, Alex?
Thank you.
But I'm going to wrap up, I'm going to wrap it up. Dennis Zine, I met you at the corner of Mel Rosen Highland when you were a motorcycle cop from the LAPD in uniform. We talked about the problems of the LAPD. I'm really thrilled that you're on city council. Joel Wax, you know, I think, oh, you're going to love New York. I hope you'll stay in touch with us when you're in New York, because you know I'm from New York. Dennis Hahn, you weren't my first choice, your brother, but I made my promise. I got my picture taken yesterday with him. I told you I'd give you his support. I think I'm out of time. J.M. Perry, I read about you this morning. My, I'm from Woodmere, New York. I read that your parents were mayor of a township called Woodmere in Ohio. I look forward to working with you. Ed Reyes, congratulations. I'm out of time. Larry Green.
Thank you. Quincy, please.
All the new members arrived here this morning. They were virgin city council people. The meeting is almost over. You've been de-virginated. You're now all city council, hardened city council members, and I'm excited, and for the first time in many years, we have a felony-free city council. Do you realize not one person on this city council has been arrested for drug dealing, for drug-taking? Not one person on this city council has been arrested by the FBI? Not one person in this city council pled guilty to taking bribes and is now under house arrest? I can't even, I wouldn't waste my time asking for your urine samples. They'd all be clean. But I want to tell you, Dennis, they always talk about the cops and the code of silence, but there was a code of silence on this city council, because everybody knew that Hernandez was a junkie when he came to these meetings, and everybody knew Alatorre was a crook, but the code of silence isn't just for white cops. The code of silence is rainbow for this city council, and they looked the other way until they were both convicted.
Can I ask you to conclude, please?
Well, I knew when I started talking about the real story, things stopped, and I like to say, I hope someday, I hope, Mr. Zine, that when you become a cop again, you'll give me an honorary arrest, because I couldn't think of anything better than being arrested by Dennis Zine.
Thank you very much. Quincy to conclude the public comment.
President Padilla, city council members, I want to relate some NIMBYism in Baldwin Hills, where they actually said that in a 1,200-acre park, there couldn't be a trailer-sized microturbine generator to power both the oil rigs there and also 53 megawatts of electricity to the Belmont so-called fiasco, and this goes also with Playa del Rey, because there's a huge amount of hearsay going on about explosive methane gas and toxic hydrogen sulfide that are actually mostly just hearsay, having very little to do with the facts. But this is a visual aid. I want to show you, your school board just got a gift of $250,000 from British Petroleum, which is the number-one distributor of gasoline...
If I could ask you to conclude, please?
For converting to CNG buses. What they didn't tell you is that they have, they're the number-one producer of gas in the Alaskan North Slope via pipeline. They're also, their Amoco unit in Jamaica is going to be producing liquid natural gas for the market here.
Thank you.
One more thing, and that's that if, if the denigration of the school system goes into privatization, then who's going to be the number-one beneficiary of all these buses is going to be Mr. Reardon's Leyd Law Greyhound Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number thirty is a closed-session item.
According to California law, we will now adjourn, go into closed session. Any non-council members or relevant staff, if I can ask you to please clear chambers. Sergeants?
Mr. President, while you're doing that, would you like to do housekeeping?
Let's do housekeeping.
Motion for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred. The desk is clear, except for item number thirty. Colleagues, we are now back in open session. Clerk, which is the item before us?
Item number thirty A is before you. There is a motion on the table to recommend settlement as recommended by the city attorney in the amount of $23,000.
Let's open a roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, the desk is clear.
This is the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements? Mr. Weiss?
I think Mr. Weiss wanted to be counted as a no vote on that last item.
I did, and I apologize, Mr. President, if I can move for reconsideration.
No, it won't change the vote.
It won't change. The outcome of the vote will reflect the record to include you as a no vote. Okay, that is the end of our agenda. Are there any announcements? Any adjourning motions?
Yeah. Adjourning.
Ms. Hahn?
Mr. President, members of the council, I ask us to adjourn today in the memory of Mr. John Mendez, and John was a longtime activist in the community of Wilmington in the 15th District, and I use the word activist with great esteem, for he was one who, until the end of his life, took every opportunity to stand up on behalf of his beloved community of Wilmington. John was a field deputy to Councilman Gibson, and he was also a field deputy to Councilwoman Flores. He is survived by his wife, Juanita, and two daughters, so I ask that we adjourn in his very precious memory.
I'd like to second that. He was great.
What else? Any other motions? Mr. Wax?
Yes, I'd like the council to adjourn in the memory of Adelaide Nimetz Factor. She was a very, very talented woman in her own right as a jazz vocalist with Stan Kenton, as an actress, later as a manager, as a producer of many of the best plays in Los Angeles, a very distinguished career. She also, in the seventies, was on a crusade against child pornography, and to the degree that she got so involved, she ran against me for the city council and was a very tough race, and then in years past, she then began to work for me and was an avid supporter. She's someone that I had great respect for, and she leaves her second husband and her family, and I'll give the clerk the pertinent information on that.
Thank you.
And I want to be added again to John. He was a great guy. I just really enjoyed the time I spent with him when he was working for Ms. Flores and Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Weiss? Clerk, call the roll. Meeting is adjourned.